All right, let's call a meeting to order. Celeste, please call a roll.
Evans, here.
Professorig.
Here.
Mead.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Slifka.
Here.
Stocking.
Here.
All right, thank you. We need approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
I do have, just, I think there are more typos than anything, but I thought I'd bring them up. On page, I know.
For minutes.
Oh, is this?
This is the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll get to the minutes next.
Move to approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we have the approval of the minutes. January 9th, there's two meetings. January 9th, 2020, and January 23rd, 2020. Brad?
January 9th, one.
Okay.
On page two, to remove the paragraphs about lightening.
Which paragraph is it down?
As for lighting, about halfway down, commissioners are going to remove the paragraphs about the lightening.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Instead.
And also, the, let's see, one, two, three paragraphs down from there, it ends with, it should remove, remove in this, I think it should say regulation, but it just says regular also.
Regular also, okay, remove this, uh...
Remove this regulation.
Remove this regulation also, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other items? No? Is that just January 9th? That would be, is it January 9th? Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anything on January 23rd, 2020? No?
Move to approve.
Stocking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. So we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is first re-subdivision of the woodland subdivision, preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval for two lot, single-family subdivision in the RE single-family residential district. The location is the southwest corner of Ray and South Batavia Avenue. And the applicant is Steve, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your name.
Bertheau.
Bertheau? Okay. Are any people here to speak on this matter this evening? Okay.
These are my next door neighbor, these are the other, so there's going to, the re-subdivision is with two single-family homes.
Yeah.
So this is Linda Riley Murphy and Pat Murphy, who are the other owners of the...
Okay, I'll just read the oath if you please rise. I'm just not going to read the whole petition because, okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, may be seated. Okay, Paul, do you have anything on the record?
Yes. The contents of the file is an application prepared by Steve Bertheau dated October 10th, 2019, authorization to perform the woodland subdivision improvements, tree preservation, easements, remodeling, landscaping, and stormwater, signed by Patrick and Linda Murphy dated December 4th, 2019, project narrative prepared by the applicant dated February 12th, 2020, submitted January 30th, 2020, preliminary final plat of subdivision prepared by the Engineering Resources Associates dated January 20th, 2020, preliminary engineering plans prepared by Engineering Resources Associates revision dated January 2nd, 2020 for 520 Ray Street, preliminary engineering plans prepared by Engineering Resources Associates revision dated January 27th, 2020 for 674 Ray Street, 520 Ray Street landscape plan prepared by Colton and Quinn prepared December 4th, 2019, 674 Ray Street landscape plan prepared by Pinnacle Land Creations submitted December 12th, 2019, tree preservation plan prepared by Laughlin Design Group updated January 29th, 2020 by the applicant, staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission which summarizes the request and provides staff's analysis dated February 13th, 2020, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on January 28th, 2020 for tonight's public hearing, and a copy of the notification letter mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property for tonight's public hearing.
All right, thank you very much, Paul. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you very much for coming out on this wonderfully brisk evening, but greatly appreciate y'all coming out to listen to what we have to offer here. My name is Steve Bertheau, spelled B-E-R-T-H-E-A-U, and I am the current owner of four of the original five lot woodland subdivision that my wife and I purchased back in May of last year. The point of the discussion here is to take the original subdivision, which was the first woodland subdivision, a little bit difficult to see, but as you can see here, there were five lots back in 2016 that the previous developer had subdivided with individual lot lines, individual easements, and the concept at that time was that all five lots would be sold individually and single-family homes were to be constructed on those lots. So with that, then, there was a pretty significant stormwater management system that came in because of the previous nature of the homes that would have been there. And now, when my wife and I came in, we purchased four of the five lots. Pat Murphy and Linda Riley Murphy are the neighbors who purchased lot number five kind of in the same timeframe as when the woodlands were developed, and so they are my wonderful neighbors here in lot number five. And then my wife and I, Patrice, had purchased these other four, and what we would like to do now is basically erase these individual four lots and combine them, consolidate them into a single lot. I have some pretty significant landscaping plans that you can see in the attachment to really beautify this area, and I'm doing some pretty significant upgrades. They're really, the home that's there was built, I think, in like 1907 timeframe, and there are some areas that have worn out a little bit, and so we're doing some upgrades and repairs, modifications to the home proper, and then putting some significant landscaping. And with that, then, with the property lines and the easements that went through there, those kind of make the whole landscaping development plan a little more complicated. So we're consolidating the lots to basically get rid of those individual interior lot lines so that it opens things up. I'm putting some garages in, I'm a little bit of a car collector, and so some of those areas would have crossed over property lines as they were, these types of things, so. So that's really the crux of the project. We, my wife and I really love the area. I was born in Michigan, but I moved to Chicagoland in 1981 and have lived in Lyle, Naperville, Aurora, this area, and have always loved Geneva, and we finally, this property went for sale, and we finally got the opportunity to come to Geneva, and we love it here. I mean, so we, I'm making this my permanent home. It's like I was joking with Paul, I'm actually, I'm putting an elevator in so that when my knees go bad, I can take the elevator back. So this will be my final resting place.
Wow.
But beyond that, I mean, there were some improvements that the previous developer had here, like she had put in, after we had closed, put in a sidewalk that was to go across the length of Ray Street, so that's been completed. There are some parkway trees that we're working, the parkway trees in with the rest of our landscaping. There were some dead trees on the property, like I said, part of the land had been a little bit derelict, and so we're making some, you know, cleaning things up a little bit there and doing some significant landscaping and more than adding many, many more trees than what has been removed. So we're really going to make this a beautiful place, so. I don't know if you all have any specific questions about anything, or if you really need anything else for me, I mean, I think that's...
We'll find out. John, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Him? No. John?
Mm-mm.
Brad?
I don't really think so.
Okay, Michael?
Nope.
Okay, so the only thing I had was, in terms of the modifications, the city engineers looked at them and everything's fine as far as the drainage is concerned.
Thank you for bringing that up. One thing I wanted to bring up was, in, he, John, Steve's been working with the, our Public Works Department and in that, in plans and things moving forward, and one of the things that they said that his plans are far enough along that he can just go to building permit on this, so we're striking condition number six that he goes to final engineer.
Okay.
Because he, rather than submit that, he's already kind of done a lot of that through a building permit.
Looks like he has done quite a bit already.
I've spent significant time meeting with Brian Schreiber over at Works, going through all the details of the stormwater system, and also with the lots, the original lot configuration had, for example, water B boxes for each individual lot, so those I'm disconnecting and restoring, restoring that back to the main. So there's...
So those are already put in?
Yeah, they were put in, and so what I'm doing now basically is, the main itself runs along the north side of Ray Street, so there are three locations where there's a water tap into that main, where there was a valve that was put in right at that location. So basically, we're going to dig down and turn the valve off, and then the, there's no dead leg anymore. It just gets abandoned in place, but it's going to be, the valve will be turned off and the line will be cut, and so the water main is, maintains its full integrity. So a couple of things like that that are part of the right-of-way permit that I've actually already given a bond to, to Brian to move forward with it, and he's had, you know, WBK, who's the independent agency that you all use to do engineering technical assessment, and they've all approved everything that we're doing, and we've gone through with significant discussions, and what's the most optimum way to handle the existing stormwater system, you know, how do we subdivide or, you know, break away the private management of the water on our two pieces of property so that it isn't part of the city, so that you don't have infrastructure you have to maintain. There is one line that runs across the easement here, that's an existing line that was part of the previous development, and with some complications on existing infrastructure out in Batavia Avenue, keeping this line is the most optimum configuration. So that's according to Public Works, and WBK also agrees with that.
And you're fine with that?
And I'm fine with that. It's such a limited, I'm actually making some changes to that to even simplify things. There's an existing line that takes right-of-way water, cuts across here, goes through, and it goes through a detention pond right now, and I'm isolating that line and just having it flow directly out into the existing infrastructure on Batavia so that it doesn't intermingle with our own property water, so it, we're simplifying things.
Okay.
But I'm fine with this configuration, yes, sir.
Okay, that's the...
Yeah. I am, and WBK is, and Brian is, so.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any public comment on this? No? Good. Okay.
Move to close a public hearing.
Second.
Moving second, it's Celeste.
All righty, Evans? Aye. Professorig?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Rittenhouse?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stocking?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of a preliminary final subdivision approval for a two lot, single-family subdivision in the RE State Single Family Residential District located at the southwest corner of Ray Street and South Batavia Avenue, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report and further subject to the five conditions, starting on page four of the staff report, as follows. Number one, the condition requiring the establishment of a backup special service area to ensure the stormwater detention is properly maintained under regulation, or resolution 2016-66 is no longer required under the proposed subdivision plan and will be eliminated. Number two, the applicant shall plant two red oaks and one Japanese, and two Japanese lilacs as parkway trees along Ray Street in accordance with the Tree Inventory and Preservation Plan. Number three, the applicant shall contribute $780 to the City Tree Bank Fund in lieu of planting three parkway trees along South Batavia Avenue in accordance with Section 11-10A-9 of the zoning ordinance. Number four, the 674 Ray Street property owner shall plant two Japanese lilac trees as parkway trees along Ray Street in accordance with the Tree Inventory and Preservation Plan. And number five, the 674 Ray Street property owner should contribute $260 to the City Tree Bank Fund in lieu of planting one parkway tree along Ray Street in accordance with Section 11-10A-9 of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, it's the last.
Okay, Evans?
Aye.
Professorig?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Rittenhouse?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stocking?
Aye.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you very much. March 2nd is when it'll go to City Council. March 2nd is when it'll go to City Council. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So our next item on the agenda is continued public hearing from January 9th, 2020. It's a zoning ordinance text amendment. There's a number of items we're under consideration. Request for text amendment to Title 11, zoning of the Geneva Municipal Code, related to the following accessory structures: pergolas, gazebos, trellises, summerhouses, arbors, and shade sales. The proposal of the zoning ordinance text amendment are as follows. Chapter 2, definitions of words and terms defining accessory structures. Chapter 3, Section 11-3-3, accessory buildings and uses related to the regulations for certain accessory structures. And Chapter 15, zoning illustrations, accessory structures. Related to illustrating certain accessory structures, the applicant is the city of Geneva. And we had a couple of items, I think, from the last hearing, and wanted to keep it open because we still had some major items that might change significantly, and I think that's what Paul's going to address today.
And I'll read real quickly what the contents of our Planning and Zoning Commission file are. The application that was submitted, zoning ordinance text amendment submitted by the Community Development Department on December 16th, and then we have a staff report that we're submitting to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which summarizes our requests and staff analysis dated February 13th, 2020, a PowerPoint presentation I'm giving tonight, and that our public hearing was published in Daily Herald on December 23rd, 2019.
Okay.
All right. All right, well, thank you. Try to catch you up where we were from last time. We had gone through the texts of all these different structures, and I think really, really whittled down well on them as far as what we had, and so we went back and took those changes that we had and went forward with a draft of what we had, you know, I think the changes that you guys had made, but we had noticed that these also affect the historic preservation, so we wanted to get their impact input on this, too. So they looked at it, and then staff looked at it regarding the changes that we had. That was one of the reasons you wanted to continue it, so we could take a look at that. And so what we have now are those changes that are kind of all synthesized, and because we had so many different, I mean, some of the changes were just even format, so they were, each of the individual items were structured consistently, like height was first and setback second and things like that. So there was a, there was a certain relationship to each one, and because of that, it got to be really messy, and so what we are suggesting is just to try to show you a clean copy of that, what we sent, and then at the end of the report, we have what you guys had approved last time. And you can see that really the, I don't think that the changes we have are huge, we have some heights that were a little higher, and we took lighting generally out of it. We thought that it just really didn't need to regulate the lighting on these as much because it just got to be very, how much lighting, you know, how many lights and the things. So those are things that we thought just weren't necessarily a problem, and if they do become a problem, maybe that's something we can come back with at a later date. So just to start, these are the definitions that we had. We really haven't had any changes from what, there are no changes from what the Planning and Zoning Commission proposed before for the definitions. These are the different illustrations that we'll be putting in the, in the plan. And then, so under attached, one of the things that came out of the meeting that we had is we realized that in putting these heights in, that it was going to be a conflict with this section of the accessory building and uses, that it says that before, any detached accessory building or structure shall not exceed the height of the principal building or the structure on zoning lot, or 25 feet, whichever is less. And so we realized in some of these, we were saying 14, 15 feet, and so in order to keep it at 14 and 15 instead of the height of the house or 25, we needed to go in and just make this small adjustment that says basically the height of accessory buildings and structures, unless otherwise noted, and then, and then we're largely talking about detached accessory buildings. So that just means that the heights that we put in there are the heights that we're talking about and not the height of the house and 25 feet. So that's why we're suggesting, does that make sense to any? Please stop me if you want to discuss at any point any of these issues or say, you know, that's not my understanding, or I'd like to look at it differently. But we just thought for consistency, we can't have this conflict in the ordinance with one saying, you guy comes in, I read that, it said it could be up to 25 feet high or the house, and it's well less than that, so now we have a conflict. So now this way, we feel, by having unless otherwise noted on there, not to be a conflict. So, so in getting started, here's, first one is the pergolas. The big change here that we had, and I think we had some discussion last time, is we broke out the extend eight feet into the required street setback, and that was what somebody was, basically the discussion we had was porches. You know, if somebody can have a porch that, that goes into the, into the front setback, why can't we have a, have a pergola? And so we said, well, I guess that makes sense, and then it says, you know, except in the DCM, RSCM, and it may extend to the property line, and that, that's the same language we had before with that. And then the tallest element we have is 12 feet. I think that's where we landed last time, as far as my notes was concerned, that 12 feet was that. So basically, that's the change, was adding the eight feet for the porch to make it consistent with the other district standards that we had in that area.
Hey, Paul?
Next, oh, go ahead.
Could that, if that was a second floor deck it was covering, could it then be taller than the highest point of the house, if the highest point of the house was not? And if so, do you want to limit it to the highest point of the house?
Maximum allowed height, the tallest...
I can't imagine that from a...
Above the covered surface.
Gutter line to the peak is going to be, that's usually eight feet or nine feet, maybe.
Well, can a pergola be a second floor deck? That's a good thing, isn't that part of the...
I think it can, I think people put them on decks.
Well, yeah, we have that, it's kind of at Sergio's over there, is kind of at least a raised, whether second floor or raised, but I'm trying to think, unless otherwise noted, and I guess you're right, it's above the covered surface, so somebody had a deck and then put 14 feet above that.
Well, it would be 12 feet, it's limited to 12.
12 feet above that. I guess what thought is, it's still not going to go over, it'd almost have to be a flat, flat roof building.
Commercial use, it could be a flat roof, but it's always had an issue.
Yeah, some of that, like I said, we've had, we've battled with the idea of how much regulation to put on this, and we're sort of, because we're just putting our foot in the water on some of these things, is to just try to see, is it going to be a problem?
I think that'll be fine.
And then come back and say, you know what, we're really, you know, that's really, you know, people are interpreting this wrong, or we see how this is going, and we really need to put a stop to it, so. And right now, I think that's where we're going with it. So unless you think differently, that we think that 12 feet from the covered surface is a good way to go. So this is the old one. And shade sales, I think we're, here is 15 feet. I think before it was 12 feet. This is the text from the meeting attached, it's 12 feet, and I think we looked, you know, some of the thought was, you may need that 15 feet a little higher in order to get some of the pitches involved, and so we thought that that's the main reason, we don't think people try to abuse that too much, but, and we thought that's better than the 25 feet or the, or the height of the house, so it's kind of in between, but it gives a little more height for some of these shade sales to be a little higher. So that was, and then, if you notice, we also changed this, shall not contain any logos or advertisements. Last time, we said graphics, and we thought this would maybe a little clearer if we say logos and advertisements.
Yep.
So, no, and so I think other than that, that's, it was consistent with what before the council had.
So, as far as the height, you've limited it to 15 feet, but you're not restricting it to not higher than the highest point on the structure?
Correct, because that's what the, unless otherwise noted, and so this is noted, when you're in shade sales, the highest it could be is 15 feet.
Okay, the previous definition you had, and...
Yeah.
It's hard to think through all this, but...
Sure.
Previous definition you had was the maximum height would be 12 feet, or the height, or the height, shall not be higher than the highest E or 12 feet, whichever is higher.
Yeah, that's this one, yes, this is the old one.
Your intent is to, you're intentionally getting rid of, intentionally getting rid of reference to the highest peak on the attached structure, correct?
Yes. Yeah, and we think that that's high enough, so, yeah. Is that okay? Please, okay, if you don't. Trellises, I think that we have basically the same definition as, same definition as before on trellises.
Why did, excuse me, why did we say a trellis couldn't go in a front yard? I mean, it's up against the house.
Right.
Allowed in any yard except the front yard.
Because this is attached, so it'd be against the house.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the problem with the front yard location.
Um, is that what we had before? Maybe we didn't talk about it before. Let's see what we had. No taller than the structure to which it is attached. For open air or freestanding trellises, the maximum height allowed is the same as the applicable yard fence height. And then, shall be, that's attached, and this is attached. Um, trying to think of what, allowed in any yard except the front yard, what we were thinking, the trellises, if they would be, so they're on the, usually, well, it's going to be attached to the building, so...
I can think of examples where there are trellises...
Yeah.
In front yards and they're...
Relatively attractive.
Yeah, it's a nice bit of landscaping, actually.
Yeah, trying to think of what, why, why we had that. I don't think we paid as much attention to it because it wasn't an issue last time of having it, oh, put in there, but you're right, now we have no taller, no taller than the structure to which it is attached or adjacent to. For open air, the maximum height, same as the applicable yard fence height. Um, I can't right off the bat think of why...
I'm with ma'am, I don't see why you wouldn't.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have a detached one, right? It has to be attached.
This is attached.
Detached one, maybe, that's what we were having problems with.
Yeah, and that's got a different restriction.
Okay.
Detached, I don't see any problem.
Okay, so...
You would strike allowed in any yard except for the front yard, and just start with maximum?
Yeah, and, right, so the height should be no greater than the structure which it is adjacent or attached to, okay, okay.
And then do we need to change the notations for the permitted yard location? We don't even have a column for front there, right?
Well, the front is a street.
Oh, that is a street, okay, sorry.
It's a particular street, so...
Street in front of the yard.
Yeah, I remember now.
Want to go down that path?
Yeah, no, I don't. Enough said.
Bringing that, bringing that up, Brad. Actually, when you bring that up, though, Brad, if you go back to one of the shade sale...
Okay.
It says allowed in any yard except the front yard, and if we're assuming that the street yard is the front yard, then that's kind of a contradictory statement.
A front yard is a type of street yard, but a front yard...
I was assuming, that a front yard was a subset of a street yard.
Correct.
But then...
And that makes, and we would have a problem with it in the, for the shade sales, is just being too obstructive in the front, and we just think that's not a...
But they're all, shade, I think what ma'am is saying, they're allowed in a side...
In a street yard or a side?
A street yard which is a side yard.
If the street yard happens to be the side yard.
Right.
But in this instance, we're saying the street yard can be the front yard or not the front yard, and it's still okay.
Yeah, the only time that you really have, the street yard is the front yard on all interior lots, so the only time you have a street yard and a front yard difference is on a... is on a corner lot, because then you have two street yards.
And the way you illustrated it last time, if I recall, the front of the house may not be in the front yard.
Correct, correct.
It could be the side yard, so you would be allowing a street or a shade sale in the front yard of the house. I mean, in, in, in the front-
Right.
In the, in the generic entrance side of the house.
Yes, on the entrance side of the house.
Yeah, that is possible. You're right. And again, when we try to determine what a front yard is, you're right, it is not always how it's addressed, it's not, but you're right, I guess, you're right, that could happen. But it's only on corner lots that you're going to have that, that the only way that it would happen is a corner lot. And we'll have to see if that's, you know, how to write it such that, you know, unless your door is located here, you know, so it's just-
And folks with a corner yard have a challenge because of those types of things, anyway, because they're on two street yards. Is it better to allow it on one going into it, and if it becomes a problem, to come back and amend it later? Or is it better to prohibit it on two street yards, which might be overly restrictive on a corner lot owner? Right?
Are we talking about shade sales, or-
Shades, I'm, I've diverted to shade sales.
Yeah, we're on sales now, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I would think you would not want it on a side yard.
On a, on a street yard?
Well, a street yard that is a side yard. But you would want a pergola, I think, back to ma'am's point, you would allow a pergola on a street yard that is a front yard.
Right.
So nothing distinguishes the difference between those in the notations on here. Is that right?
You're right, that we would allow a pergola in the front yard, kind of like, like an entrance way, that we've seen that in being proposed. But we don't think a shade sale is quite the same, generally thought, people sitting in-
Sorry, I was referring to shade sales versus trellises. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
So you would, nothing in here says shade sales you can have on a street yard. Well, I guess trellises you can have on a street yard. But you wouldn't want shade sales to be on a front yard, which is a street yard.
Right.
But it says you can.
But would you want them to be on any street yard? A shade sale?
I think it's all right, if it's not the front yard.
Yeah, some people, you know, it's kind of-
The generic front yard, or the city definition front yard?
The generic front yard.
Who's on first? Yeah, right.
I could see on my street yard, that's my, I would call side yard, or whatever, having a shade sale there. I don't, I wouldn't, I don't have the configuration for it now, but I could see having a porch there, and then putting a shade sale over that, and it's still looking completely attractive.
Yeah, I could see it, too.
And sometimes with a corner lot, because you have the two streets, which are about 20, 20 feet back on both, a lot of times, your rear yard is not all that big, you know, I mean, sometimes, even though it's intended to try to create as much as you can, that you see a lot of people using the street yard more, you know, almost like a, like a rear yard in some of the activities that they have, if it's wide enough, so. Yeah. Okay, well, we'll make that change.
I'm finding the way through it.
So, I think, Brad, and maybe I'm jumping ahead or not, but you said pergolas were allowed in front yards?
Attached, you're in detached.
Yeah, in attached.
Attached pergolas. Sorry, attached trellises.
Extend, yeah. Which one, pergolas, may extend eight feet into a required street setback. And that's because we just talked about with porches, if we're talking about pergolas, is because porches are allowed to do that, and we were considering, a lot of people, we're pointing out that a pergola and a porch are similar, and we kind of looked at that from last time and said, okay, let's do that.
So that's, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, I just, I'm sorry to beat this point, but I just, doesn't this say a shade sale can be in your front yard?
Yes.
And we, we're saying that that's not-
It says accept the front yard.
Except, allowed in any yard except the front yard.
I'm sorry, allowed in any yard except the front yard, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, gotcha. It's in, okay, I see, it's in the text, not in the notations.
It could be in a street yard that is not considered by the city's definition.
It's trellises that we took out.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it. I am, I'm good with it now, sorry about that.
All right. So our big change is just in trellises, that we're going to get rid of it and allow it to be in the front yard, because, and this is attached, so it's going to be attached to the structure in the front, a maximum, okay, allowable height.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right. Then, I'm sorry, going on to detached. The other changes were basically no changes, we're getting rid of playhouses, gazebos, et cetera, in the front yards. We talked about that. Okay, so now, indeed, detached. I don't recall too many, other than making too many changes with this, except maybe format on these. Let's see, what we had, allowed, allowed in the front, here we go. Yeah, we still have it, eight feet and three feet and two, yeah, so that's, those are all the same. And you saw, the thing we did is, we had before was the only low wattage and lighting allowed. We, we removed the lighting out of basically all of these. We just thought, what's low wattage? What's lighting? You know, it just got to be too much, you know, you can allow it in this one, and you have an outlet, and we were trying to say seasonal or part-time, and it just got to be, like, you're really regulating this a lot, and we just think, you know, bring it back, and let's see. But for the most part, because it's like, okay, again, what would be the low wattage? What does somebody consider? Is that 30 watts? Is that, okay, how many then? How many 30 watts? And so we would go to the city's lighting standard, if it's so bright that it's, it's going against that. Or, again, if we see this in action, and we say, you know what, that's really a problem, that we need to look at, and maybe it's a lighting, but go ahead.
I think you just answered my question, but, and I don't have any problem if we take power and lighting out of this. But where, just from my education, where is it regular, is there's regular city ordinances for outdoor lighting that, that will control all of this, anyway, right?
There's a lighting standard, about a half a foot candle at the property line. So that starts now, there are point source problems, you know, if something's really lighted, but it won't get all the way to, but for the most part, and there are some maximums on that, too. But mainly, what we have is, as far as for neighbors, is a half a foot candle at the property line. And that's in our, it's actually in our parking section, which is because of parking lot lighting, so.
But that, but, but it's applicable to all properties?
Yes.
Okay. So if I can read in bed about my neighbor's porch light, I can probably-
Yes, it's probably a little too much, right, exactly, that we would have something to enforce on it, yes. So-
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. And then, so again, other than some formatting, gazebos, we had it as 14 feet, that's the same height as we had before. And then the pergolas were also 12 feet above the covered surface. For the, I'm sorry, it would help if I kind of narrated through this with you. Gazebos, not really a, a big change in that. And then the pergolas, again, it's a 12 feet above the covered surface. And shade sales, this is where we changed it to 15 feet, where we had 12 feet before, and so it's just consistent. And then again, any logos or advertisements, instead of graphics, that we had. And then, summer houses, just making that, that it's just about summer houses, and the play equipment is separate.
Yep.
You know, and this one, we, we put this in, we realized it was kind of a conflict is, we said, we needed to say the exception, in parentheses, is that basketball hoops, backstops, and supporting posts are allowed in, in, in all yards. Because the way it read, without saying an exception, then it, it didn't, then it said, well, wait a minute, it only says it's restricted to the rear yard. So, so we thought, we wanted to make clear that it's an exception. And then trellises, we talked about that, the same as the applicable fence yard standard, which is the one I wanted to point out here, was, was it shade sales? Yeah. All right, yeah, 15 feet above the, above the covered surface, right, okay. And then advertisements. So, were there any other questions with any of those? Does that make sense to-
One question.
Sure.
Well, two questions.
Okay, which one?
I've seen people with a traditional octagonal or six-sided gazebo, screen them in. By your definition, those would then become summer houses, right?
By the definition of-
Because the gazebo's, in your first definition, is just, is an open air. Anything that's got windows or screens is a summer house.
Yeah, let's see, I want to see that definition myself.
Someone took the traditional, and just put screening, screen panels in it, it would then become a summer house, which is limited to 14 feet above grade, where a pergola is limited to, or, the gazebo is limited to 14 feet above, above finish grade. Are they both, I think they're the same limitation, so it's probably-
Okay.
It's probably okay.
Okay. Yeah, 14 for-
I asked both my questions in one, so.
Okay.
And you answered your own question.
I did, you know.
Okay.
You gotta go around your elbow to get to your thumb sometimes.
All right. Well, anyway, that's, that's, those are the changes. Thank you for staying with us on this topic. I know some of, some of it seems mundane until we, until somebody comes in.
I know we struggle a lot with the lighting, but I think we're fine with, like, just seeing how things go. I think most people are going to be worried about the lighting, because it's a decorative element, so they're not going to get too crazy about it, so.
Okay. So really, it was only one major change, is that right?
And I've added it.
Okay, okay.
I'll refer to it if you want me to.
Okay.
So, move to close the public, public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, it's last.
Evans?
Aye.
Passerag?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Greenhouse?
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to approve the request for a proposed zoning ordinance text amendments as follows. Number one, chapter two, section 11 dash two dash two, define, parentheses, definition of words and terms, end parentheses, related to defining certain accessory structures, parentheses, pergolas, gazebos, trellises, summer houses, arbors, and shade sales, end parentheses. Number two, chapter three, section 11 dash three dash three, parentheses, accessory buildings and uses, end parentheses, related to regulations for certain accessory structures, parentheses, pergolas, gazebos, trellises, summer houses, arbors, and shade sales, end parentheses. And number three, chapter 15, sections 11 dash 15 dash 19, parentheses, zoning illustrations, dash, accessory structures, end parentheses, related to illustrating what certain accessory structures look like, i.e. pergolas, gazebo, trellises, summer houses, arbors, and shade, shade sales, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report. And with one change noted tonight during the public hearing, that in the, in the restrictions for attached accessory structures related to trellises, that the phrase "allowed in any yard except the front yard" be eliminated.
Second.
Moved in second, it's last.
Aye.
Passerag?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Greenhouse?
Aye.
Slicka?
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Take this to the March 2nd, City Council meeting, too.
Do you have any more little thing up in the ordinance, or are we good for a while?
Well, we always have some. Actually, yes, we talked about some today, that we, you know, as we have a downtown zoning, we made a lot of changes, and I think we're going to come back with a tweak on that one, too. So we'll have, probably, that'll be in, would be in March, yeah, so, something with that. As far as what's coming down the pipe, we have noticed for the 27th of February, and this is an annexation, we haven't had an annexation in a while, it's 30, about 30 acres. It's called the Kramer, Kramer Farm. And basically, they have a farm, and we're looking, getting some access for Couch Road, extended, the, the south leg, you know.
Oh, wow.
You know, so they're-
At the bridge?
Well, it gives, the point for the city is to have, being able to utilize this area for a road to access the industrial park that we're working on. So, this, the, the family, the Kramer family, basically wants to, basically still stay in farm, or live in that for a while. And what we're looking for is just eventual access and the ability to put a road in that area, should a developer come in. So, anyway, so that's the annexation. That will be coming at the end of, end of this month, as I said. And then others we have, we're working with the Weber, Weber Farm, which is on the north border next to St. Charles, near the airport. They're currently in for annexation to develop as an industrial park. And then, and then we also are expecting, what we saw last year was that truck transportation place on Reed and Old Kirk. They, I met with them, and they're getting their information in, so they'll have a plan for annexation and development as a truck repair place. So, there'll be a number of, yeah, I'd say three or four annexations, and the city will see this year, so.
Okay, very cool.
Great. That's my update.
You can't retire until all these annexations are done.
That's right.
That's right.
Your legacy is going to be pergolas and trellises. This is going to be your swan song.
Yeah. All right, thank you, ma'am.